We'll call the meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. Do we have any items from the public tonight? No? Welcome. We're glad you're here. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda, the consent agenda in the minutes from September 22nd, 2025. So moved. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And I will say for the record that Counselor Williams is excused. Do we have any correspondent?
No.
Okay. So let's move on to item six. This is the second reading of ordinance 1606, which is to amend the South Bend Municipal Code relating to business licenses. The state has changed the threshold from 2,000 to 4,000. So that's the reason for this change. I would entertain a motion to approve. So moved.
Okay.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so this is the first reading of ordinance 1607. It will amend Chapter 3.10 of the South Bend Municipal Code relating to the utility excise tax. And this is just a renewal of the current tax, which is at 12% currently, because it expires at the end of the year. So we're renewing it exactly the same as it's been. There's no changes in it whatsoever. So I would entertain a motion to approve. So moved.
So moved.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, continuing discussion on the CPI increase regarding sewer and water. As you remember from our last meeting, we read the language in here that, let me find it, that says that charges for sewer service in the city of South Bend shall be as follows and will be adjusted by an inflation factor equal to 100% of the U.S. Consumer Price Index for the C-TAC area on the January 1 billing for each ensuing year, unless the city council deems otherwise. So this is the discussion that we're having. And there has been some further information that you asked for at the last meeting provided. This last sheet in your packet shows the, you asked about the utility discount for the low-income folks. And there's different discounts compared to income thresholds. So there's a 5%, a 10%, a 25%, and a 40% discount depending on what your household income level is. And the maximum total discount allowed per household per year is $300. And you have to update your application every year. So what was the other? There was another question that we had, and I don't remember what that was at this time.
Depending on how many, we asked how many inactive accounts are we?
And what are you charged for the?
They're, they're charged $30 for disconnected water. I mean, it's inactive. It's called disconnected, but it's actually just inactive. So they get charged $35 a month for that, and they'd get charged $50, $54.50 for sewer. If it's inactive.
Which means the meter's still there. They just have their
They haven't disconnected, yeah. And then
Oh, go ahead.
There's essentially 30. It varies from month to month, but we average about 35 accounts that are considered disconnected.
And the reason for those disconnect fees or the water turned off fees is because we still have to pay the loans on the sewer and the water treatment plants.
That's why I think they should be increased.
I think we have the option to increase.
I think they have to be increased.
We have increased water. See, if you notice that the last 1601, when was that, last year? 2024 was 1601.
I couldn't tell you right off the top of my head.
Yeah. We can look at the, it's included. But sewer hasn't been touched for a while. Sewer hasn't been recognized. Let's just say 1601 was passed.
The main thing that, that we're, you need to decide is if you're gonna do the CPI increase. And I will say that the comprehensive plan came back with some revisions from, is it Commerce that does that, Dennis? Am I right?
Say that again.
Is it Commerce or Ecology that the Water System Plan language came back with changes that they wanted made?
The Water System Plan.
That's the Water System Plan, but it comes from Commerce. They're the ones that are reviewing it. Yeah, that's what I thought.
A number of entities review it, but Commerce won't have it.
All the comments. And one of the things that they commented on was the fact that we were not doing annual increases in our utilities. Because the inflation factor is always there. And the concern is that if you don't take an annual incremental increase that then you would have to do as we have had to do in the past, the bigger
You're gonna come out short.
Yeah, yeah. So anyway, that's, that's what the discussion is about tonight. We're not voting on anything. Just a discussion and I guess a recommendation as to what he would like us to do with this.
The other question we had was how many, how many accounts get a discount on their service charge?
I don't have that answer. I'll have to, I'll have to.
Forgot about that one?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I'm not sure. Either.
I can ask. I'll have to ask Kim about that.
Yeah. And we're not in a hurry. If you wanna wait until the next meeting, until we get that information, we can certainly wait, you know? Anything that we do becomes active. We're thinking January 1 for the January billing, but it technically could be the five days after the passage is on this one, is when it could take effect. So we have till the end of the year basically to decide what we want to do on this.
And what is the service fee? For the month? It's $40?
Service fee for what?
Well, but the discount only applies to the
The base rate?
The base rate, which is what?
Short of having a bill in front of me, I don't know.
Was it tossing the ordinance?
65, yeah.
Is it 65?
$65 a month?
Yeah.
Okay.
So if you make between $26,000 and $32,000, you get a 5% discount, which is $4, $3. Which is where a lot of our household incomes are.
But that's, that's just for water. You also get that on sewer.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, so you would get, on both sides, you would get the discount.
So the service charge for all customers, that's active user customers, right? $65?
Yes.
And the, the non-residents is of that 65, how much do they pay?
30 something, wasn't it, David? For the people that aren't using the water?
Yeah, 35, I think he said.
Well, if it's disconnected, if they're an inactive account, it's 30 for water and 54.50 for sewer.
Okay.
I think we should
Did you say non-residents?
Yeah, she said non-resident.
Well, non, non
Users, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Well, I think we should raise that.
I definitely think that we should raise that. The advantage to have instant access, I think is, is worth something.
Yeah, because otherwise they're paying how much for a GUP?
$1,600.
Yeah.
Right.
So someone can use the house twice a year and call you and have you turn the water on?
Yeah.
What do you charge for that?
We don't charge anything.
Yeah.
I think there is something in the code, a charge, 25 bucks or 50 bucks or something like that, but we never do it.
I think we should raise both of those.
Turn it on and turn it off.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Yeah. No, I, I think it should definitely be raised substantially.
No, they should pay the same as what we pay.
Yeah. Well, but they're not using it. But it doesn't matter if
What difference does that make?
Some people shut them off for construction reasons. They're not just shutting them off to not pay bill.
Right.
A lot of them are, though.
They're doing it.
We do have quite a few that just shut them off because they're gonna be gone for a couple of months.
I guess what I'm, I'm looking at, when we figured this out the last time, I figured out how much we pay each month for the loan payments for each of them, and then divided that by the number of users. And I believe we added a few dollars for a cushion, figuring that as long as those that weren't using the water paid for the loan payments, although you could take a look at it and say that, you know, there's also plant maintenance and upkeep and stuff in that too that we didn't take into account.
I think water should be 50 and sewer should be 75.
That's my two cents.
And it just seems hard to, for people that make under, you know, $30,000 a year, to give them $8 off their monthly bill, why the people that travel around don't have to pay the full amount when they're not in their home? And the burden becomes, you know, on the low-income people.
Yeah. I, I don't know. I, I have a hard time with that one. Personally, I don't. You guys are the ones get to decide. I would hate to see someone have to pay $250 that never used a gallon of water. To me, that doesn't seem fair, if they don't
Well, then
Then have it turned off and have to pay $1,500 when the next time you wanna use it. Well, you'd have to pull the meter, which is a big job.
No, I don't think we should pull meters, but if I mean, I'd like to see how many people, did we figure out how many people are not?
Well, it, it varies.
I mean, an estimate like
Like 35.
35 a month?
Yeah.
And those are people that are
35 accounts is what I, I was talking with Kim, so that's the that's the round
Average?
Average she gave me.
Is that just something we could just CPI increase every year? Add it to that instead of adding a big one, so just as we're raising the other rates, we'll see.
Incrementally.
Incrementally increase that?
Just kind of a blanket.
Yeah. So everybody gets the same increment? I don't think that's right. No, what, what, I think if I'm understanding you correctly, that at every year when you are faced with this CPI increase, you could increase that other fee incrementally as well, and not just hit them from $30 to, to whatever the, well, combined it'd be like 250 bucks for everything. I, I, to me, that's gonna, people are gonna scream bloody murder.
Well, what, I mean, what kind of percentage are we looking at raising everybody overall?
2.9 is the CPI, and that's what we discussed last time. It's 2.9.
We applied 2.9 to the other ones as well.
Is that what you're saying?
Yeah. That's right.
2.9% to the inactive accounts as well as the
And then we'll just
Active.
That way, that way it's compensating for cost increase. I think that that's, that's as fair as you can actually be with it. And there's no need to gouge a retired person who worked their whole life and actually was responsible with their money to travel and to say that I think you should pay more for somebody who can't afford toir water. I think that's gonna kind of a slap in the face of the guy that actually saved his retirement and worked hard and pays the air taxes in this community. Because without them, you don't have this community.
Mm-hmm. I don't understand what you just said.
Yeah, but yeah. If you have somebody who is important to this community, it's kind of
We're not living here.
Well, they're obviously living here. They wouldn't own a home here.
They, that's seasonal. They're like snowbirds. They leave for a few months and then come back.
They have a secondary home that they travel to, but I think that's ridiculous.
To this community. Snowbird.
Sure, they pay their taxes here, don't they? Their taxes aren't, of course they do. They own the home.
The property tax.
In other words, it'd be on the, it'd be on the courtroom steps for sale.
I'd like to see how many of those are just vacant houses of people that, you know, fall down and Yeah, and that's, that hurts our community. That's part of our problem here is all the dead houses that people won't fix up to rent or sell or
What percentage of this 35 are, are derelict homes?
We don't know.
Versus people who are traveling.
Yeah, I wouldn't know.
You know?
I don't know that question, but I could find out.
I mean, it's, it's not gonna make that big of a difference, but you're talking 30 accounts versus 1,000 homes.
Bob, Bob Hall and I years ago went around and took photographs of homes that, that were in horrible disrepair and probably would have easily been voted on to be dismantled. And I can do that again. I can go around and take pictures of property, but well.
I, and I think we also should charge and turn the water on and off.
Yeah.
50 bucks a shot, you know, you guys
Your time is
Sure that Kim's not doing that.
Your time is valuable.
She's not.
She's not, but we should be.
Oh, yeah, we should be. Yeah, we should be. I've heard her say before on the phone that it's $25.
Do you really wanna charge them, you know, 25 for each time? Because a lot of times we'll go up, turn them off and because they gotta fix a leak or something, then we'll have to go right back up and turn them back on.
No, that's a different thing. These are the people that don't use their water year-round.
Yeah.
The ones that go to Arizona and then come back and call you.
I don't know that it states that, though.
It don't state that.
No.
It's every water
And you can't be selective. If you apply something, you have to apply it to everyone.
Then we need to rewrite it.
So if there's a leak, we have to, the person has to pay the city to turn the water off to find the leak?
Yeah, most cities, I guess most cities do that. And I asked him about that, and she said she has not been doing that. And it states on them door tags that we do do that, which we do.
Well, we can rewrite that. It'd have to be, you know, if you're voluntarily turning it off to save, you know, 70 bucks every month. Yeah, that
Well, you, you could rewrite it that if it's turned on and off because of a leak, charges would be waived.
Yeah, there you go.
That would be the way to word that.
Much more diplomatic.
Lucky. That, that's what I would recommend, that you don't charge that fee if there's a leak, but for any other reason, then charge the fee. But that would, of course, have to be rewritten because right now it's, it applies to everything. So that would be another ordinance change, which is fine. We can do that. But back to the question before us. Yeah. What do you want to do with the CPI increase?
I don't think there's any question whether we need to do that or not, so.
No, we don't wanna get in trouble down the line again. That was
Yeah.
That was bad, so.
All right, so is everyone pretty much in agreement on that? I don't think we need a formal vote until we get an ordinance in front of us.
And then, you know, will we be in agreement that we would add the CPI increase to the other part of our discussion too? Or is that, that would have to be a separate?
To the, no, it doesn't have to be separate. It would be in here as well. But the disconnect fees. Is that what you want to do? Apply it across the board?
I don't
Yeah. At least.
Very sweet.
Yeah, I think so too, if you're gonna do that. Okay, so we will get an ordinance drawn up then to represent 2.9% for the fee increase as well as the disconnect fee increase for 2.9% as well, so. All right, does anyone have anything else they wanna talk about in regards to this?
No, it's disconnect and inactive fee. All of it.
It's, yes, they're kind of one and the same.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, and then did you want us to probably rewrite the other language as well? As far as not charging the the fees on and off when water's turned on or off?
Yeah.
In case it'll be
In case it'll reach.
Sure. Okay, okay, so there's a couple of things that we will bring back to you then. All right. That it then for that discussion? Okay, let's move on to Department Heads. Bones Chief Steagle.
Um, I have been in negotiations with Axon about renewing our contract. Five years ago, we signed a five-year contract and it's due. I, I feel like we've come to a agreeable contract, and I'll be presenting it to you next council meeting for your consideration. So that's all I have.
They've been good to work with?
They have been great to work with. Yeah, I'll, I'll elaborate more next, next council meeting when I have the contract to show you. But they've been wonderful.
All right, Supervisor Hope?
I don't have much. Projects are wrapping up. Everyone's turning out pretty good. Pretty pleased with the way the red town issue went. But now we're seeing ready for the rains to come.
Hey, what happened with cowlets there? Cowlet street didn't get done. Were the streets, you know, this wide and yeah, Shoudes's street?
Oh, that's, because that's concrete panel. And they didn't do any of the concrete stuff. That stuff would not work.
Okay, all right.
All concrete streets that we have with panels, they didn't get them.
That's like First Street and
Which part first?
Right in front of City Hall?
No, that, that didn't get done because that's, that was already a recent street.
Yeah, okay.
It kind of went off different.
All right, yeah, they still look good. I just wondered.
Yeah.
Then I wondered what happened with that weird one up the hill there? Cowlets.
Yeah, yeah. That, that was one. It's on, it's on the the RTIP for next round, so we'll apply for that one. There's a couple of other ones too that didn't get touched that we'll apply for to do a complete road reconstruction rather than just an old way like that.
I think it looks good. I'm real happy with, I don't know how smooth it went for you guys, but it seemed
We had a rough spot. We didn't, we thought that some of the, the pre-leveling and all that stuff was gonna get done within the contract. And so at the last minute, last two days before they showed up, we got to go through and and pre-level some stuff, so the guys were working pretty hard to get that done, you know? Which I'm glad we did because we noticed that we don't have a bunch of pawpals that were left, kind of like some of the other cities and stuff, you know, that were just covered over, so. We didn't do that, but it would've been nice to have gotten the morning prior to.
Yeah.
Two days was hard. You guys really had this ground ball.
Very hard.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Anything else?
No, I don't think so.
All right, Chief McGee?
They got a Chief rig, the Tahoe over there that never gets used. I'd like to surplus that, get rid of it. I mean, we're paying for, you know, entrance and everything else on it. There's absolutely no reason to have it. Anytime I, that I never take it to a fire. I, you know, take my personal pickup because I don't have room in my apartment at my house. I mean, and that Tahoe absolutely does us no good for anything, so. If I could surplus that, it'd be good.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to surplus the chief's Tahoe. Fire chief's Tahoe.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Go ahead, Chief.
Perfect.
Oh, I'll, I'll wait for my comments.
Oh, okay, all right. Clerk Treasure Johnson?
I have nothing.
All right, I've got a couple of things. We were at an RWCC meeting today. And currently, I attend the meetings, but I'm not actually a voting member of the council. And our voting members are Eric Demontney, Patricia Corcoran, and Bunny Williams. Eric is the chair. Patricia is stepping off of City Council at the end of the year, but she is willing to stay on as Secretary of the RWCC. Bunny is also leaving council this year. And so my understanding is that he is not interested in remaining on the RWCC. So their meetings are once a quarter, Mondays at 1 o'clock generally. And so because both of you are working men, I've asked Jan if she would fill Bunny's position on the RWCC, which is the Regional Wastewater Coordinating Committee. And she has agreed that she would do that. So I believe it's just a mayoral appointment. I don't believe it's a council.
Well, it's just, it's in the bylaws that there has to be one council member.
Yes, yes.
Is part of the RWCC.
Yes.
I'm
You're no longer going to be a councilperson. So, you know, I suppose it wouldn't hurt to take a vote. Generally, mayoral appointments are approved by the council. So I would entertain a motion to appoint Jan Davis to the RWCC board.
So moved.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I don't, yes?
Aye.
Are any opposed? You could have abstained, I guess, if you chose to, but
I can send you about 12 years' worth of
Okay.
Well, thank you, Jan. I appreciate you being willing to do that. The next meeting isn't until January 12th.
January 12th.
Yeah, yeah, so that is the next meeting and, and so great, all right. And then the other thing is, remember the, the grant that we put in for, for all the cameras in City Hall and around? They, they've most of been, been installed this week and it's amazing what they can zoom in on and see and yeah, they already helped us identify a hit-and-run person Wow. this last week, and so it's, it's been pretty good already. Yeah, yeah. So anyways, I want you to know that those are up. And looking good, we are gonna get another monitor for in here. They took that one down because it was incompatible with the new system. So, but they are gonna put one here so that we can at least see the front door, who's coming in during our meetings and during court and different things like that, so. Anyway, so that's a good thing. That's everything that I have. Do we have any public comments regarding our current agenda items this evening? We got somebody online. I'm looking. Oh, no, we do not. Yeah, I'm just making sure that the online person had a chance. There's, there's a few second delay, so. All right, moving on to council comments. Counselor Davis?
Oh, good, before I forget. Okay, so I guess the minutes, the meeting where I brought up coming down the hospital hill the wrong way, I got a text saying that someone was going up the hill to the hospital in a big truck, you know, a big truck, regular truck, came down and she had to move way over and she honked at him and he flipped her off and but in the last week, I've seen two come down. So we're gonna have a problem there real quick. And Phil said maybe they should just, you know, print in big letters, "Do not enter" on the pavement. And then maybe a little further down, you know, wrong way. I don't think it'll people going up will read it backwards. I, I mean, who knows, but you know, the ambulance goes up usually at a slow rate, but you know, people they just scream up that hill and it should be 15 miles an hour, you know?
It's just we're a hospital.
Yeah, you know, quarter to seven and then about three or four, but you know, at 8 o'clock at night, you know, they're going 40 miles an hour up the hill.
That's not, does it make it one way?
It is one way, but ever since, ever since we put up all the signage, it seems like. I mean, I don't know. I just, I never noticed it before, but
And you're seeing them come from, all the way from the hospital? It's not the people that live there and you're only seeing
No, because the only people that use, there's only two people that, you know, the Blue House tucked away in the White House. So, no, and they're, they're people, I don't know who they are, just tooling down. And Max has seen them late at night, you know, coming down that way, real fast, just for fun, I guess. I don't know, but
What about one of those things that blows out? What about one of those things that blows out in your tire?
They only do it once.
Only one.
Yeah, it's just it's just really strange.
All year, all my years going up back in the ambulances.
Never saw.
Oh, I think one time in twenty and a half years.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, that's what's going with their minds, like this is.
You know, it's almost like it started maybe after COVID, you know, when they well, and they and then they opened the other side up to two ways. That was one of my first. Court cases when I on jury duty was the woman going down the hill and the people coming up. And she thought it was one way and was in the middle of the road. And then they made it one way for how many years? And then they opened it up to two ways and maybe that. That might have done it or, you know.
Especially if you're not from the area.
Well, that that's why one, I think one year I requested that there be a line or something down the middle of. The going down from the hospital, so it is designated that it is two-way and you have to stay on your side of the street.
Yeah, that doesn't solve the.
You know, lines down the middle should designate that.
Yeah.
You should know that.
Yeah, so I don't know. I'm just waiting to hear a crash one of these nights and having someone go over the edge, you know, into the gully.
I'm for the tire blowout. Did you have anything else?
No, that was it.
All right, Councilor Corcoran.
I'm I'm good.
All right, Councilor Mandel.
Great.
Councilor Thiking. Okay, you have any future agenda topics? All right, we stand adjourned. Thank you, everyone.